The Thursday, April 27th, regular monthly meeting is called Order. I would ask that you stand for a moment of silence. Amen. You may be seated. First of all, I want to apologize for the lateness of the meeting. And I appreciate your patience, but we had a number of issues that we had to discuss. And I do apologize for lateness again. So, thank you very much. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Bracy to introduce the students that will deliver the Pledge of Allegiance and the statement. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Parent. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you all for being with us this evening for our board meeting. At this time, I will recognize our students that will be sharing with us this evening the Pledge of Allegiance and the statement. I would first like to call down Matthew Aaron Rollins, who will be reading our Pledge of Allegiance. And as he comes, I will read a little background information on him. He's a sixth grade honor roll student who has consistently made straight A's since he was in the third grade at Simonsdale. His SOL assessment results are impressive. Grade three history and social studies, 600. Grade four mathematics, 600. Grade five reading, 600. His goal is to score 600 this year on his reading and mathematics SOL assessments before he leaves Simonsdale in June. He holds memberships in a number of student-centered organizations such as the Chrome Club, the Eagle Leaders, and the Simonsdale School News Team, the Morning Crew. He actively participates in various other community groups, a member of the Board Scouts of America since first grade, dean chief for the Wibello's, moving up recently to the rank of Tenderfoot. This young man wants to make Eagle Scout. Matthew attends Portsmouth Central Baptist Church. He plans to enroll at Liberty University where he can receive his training to become a youth minister. His parents are Scott and Lynette Rollins, and if they and other members of his family are present tonight, will you please stand to be recognized? Thank you very much. Next, we will have Kamaya Rochelle Norfleet. And some background information on Ms. Norfleet. She's a sixth grade honor roll student at Simonsdale Elementary School. Since the fourth grade, she has been a straight A student. Her goal for this year is to make 600 on her SOL assessment. Kamaya is a member of various student-centered organizations, the Chrome Club, the Eagle Leaders, and the Simonsdale Elementary School News Team, the Morning Crew. She's a member of the Man or Girls Basketball Team. She attends Chesapeake Point Harbor Church. After she earns her bachelor degree, she wants to pursue a career as an attorney or as a model. Her parents are Tiffany Boyd and Roy Norfleet, and if they and other members of her family are present, please stand at this time to be recognized. I would also, at this time, like for the principal, Ms. Darlene Bright, and I see the Assistant Principal, Ms. Tammy King, if you all want to come forward at this time as well.
Can I have everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kamaya Norfleet. My co-writer Matt Rollins and I have attended Simonsdale Elementary School since the primary grades. One of our favorite things about the school is the staff. The teachers make sure we understand the material being taught. Despite having to strive hard through tough circumstances, our teachers have always been affable and obliging. They've helped us grow throughout our years at Simonsdale. Simonsdale has many activities to offer students. The music teacher makes it possible for some of our fifth and sixth grade students to learn how to play the guitar through their participation in the Guitar Club, which meets after school each Tuesday. Our music teacher also provides extra practice for students in the All-City course so that they can sing for special city events. Another club available for grades five and six students is the Chrome Club, headed by two teachers from our mathematics and science teams. Students in the Chrome Club practice hard for the competition held in May. Responsible sixth grade students serve as helpers for the kindergarten classes to help the kindergarten students get to their buses during dismissal. Our Eagle Leaders include outstanding students in grades three through six. The Leaders Club is responsible for setting example for the primary students and for assisting our Guidance Council with special task. Another important part of Simonsdale is PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. Teachers, administrators, and students work hard to incorporate PBIS daily. Many of the students at Simonsdale are showing excellence and are benevolent to one another. We have made many friends over the years. Recently, we added our Eagle Store. By being positive, respectful, and controlled, dependable, and showing excellence, students earn Eagle Bucks. Students then use their Eagle Bucks to make purchases from the Eagle Store. Simonsdale Elementary has always been a pleasant, safe, and inviting place to be. Parent and community volunteers come to help each week. They tutor students and organize our parent and teacher communication Eagle folders. Volunteers also help with our PTA field days, special mathematics and reading events, library and book fairs. Our physical education teacher coordinates the Park and Walk Project so that participating students, parents, and staff members have a healthy way to start their day. The Simonsdale custodians work tirelessly to keep the building clean. Our crossing guards are nice and helpful. Our office staff, bus drivers, and cafeteria workers are also very important to our school. The climate in our building is very positive. Simonsdale Elementary is a really wonderful school, and that is why Simonsdale students are always soaring high with Eagle pride.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you Chairman. Mrs. Bright, Mrs. King, I also want to thank you for the wonderful autism pins, bootneers. I'm not a dude, but a bootneer because it's prom season comes to mind. But thank you so much for these, and I wear it with pride, so thank you for that.
This time, I'll ask Board Member Atkinson if she will read the mission statement.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that would foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you ma'am. At this time, we will have the Student Representative Report, Kayla Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On April 19th, I met with the Student Council Association of Douglas Park. This was a bright, young group whose ideas and initiative left me speechless. They have started a garden that each grade level takes turns to care for. They have also implemented a Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle Campaign in which they give recycling tutorials and information sessions to younger grades. In addition to their environmental campaign, they also reduced the amount of wasted food by placing their milk and unopened food in a share box during breakfast. After this, I asked the students how they feel about bullying. One of the students said they have witnessed bullying and would like to find a solution to the problem. I told them about the proposed anti-bullying campaign. The students thought it was a great project that they would like to advocate. Furthermore, students would like for me to advocate for additional website access on the Chromebooks. Scholarly articles that could be used for students' benefits have been restricted. This makes research and data harder to find. If these websites were to be unblocked, the community of schools would have more access to reputable articles. With the interest of students at hand, Dean Singleton and Ms. Katina Barnes, the head of the Dual Enrollment and First College Programs, had a roundtable discussion. But there was a twist. They had a panel of five students, including myself, to answer questions about the First College Program to see how students enjoyed it. There was a lot of positive feedback from the participants and from the crowd. Those students and many others from the area also participated in National Signing Day at Old Dominion University hosted by Access College Foundation. The knowledge and skills instilled into the students at PPS have led many of them to that event. That means all of those students will be attending a college or university in the fall. To continue preparation for higher learning, students need well-qualified teachers. In order to get these teachers to come to Portsmouth and stay, they must be well-paid. Myself, my counterpart Tegan Rogers, members of the School Board brought attention to this matter on Tuesday, April 25th, at the City Council Meeting. We individually explained how adding more teachers, courses, and a teacher raise to Portsmouth Public Schools is beneficial and necessary to achieve success. Speaking of success, IC Norcombe High School has just been ranked one of the best high schools in the nation. It earned the Bronze Medal for its academic outcomes, advanced placement opportunities, and how well it prepares students for college. As you can see, April has been a busy month for students and staff. I hope the students will continue to push for success until the end.
Thank you. Kayla, I just wanted to thank you and Ms. Rogers for speaking Tuesday night at City Council because I will tell you, that is a very intimidating feat. It was late into my twenties before I did it for the first time. And to see two of our students stand up in a packed council chambers with an audience with the City Council and to speak so eloquently and so fluently, it made me happy as a teacher, but also made me very happy as a school board member. So, I wanted to say thank you to you and Tegan for getting that done and for doing so well with that intimidating task. So, thank you very much.
At this time, our clerk will call attendance by electronic vote. Please indicate your attendance by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. You've had the agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please.
I was going to ask if we could move the discipline cases up.
Oh, okay.
Since we have students and I know that we have staff here so that they don't have to stay through the end, if we can move that up for staff and parents and students, thank you.
That is the pleasure of the board. Board members?
Already got a motion.
Motion. Withdraw my motion.
All right. Withdraw your second.
Withdraw.
Okay. So, therefore, we're going to move 11.1 through 11.5 to amend the agenda.
Move for approval, what amendment?
Second.
Motion's been made. Second, board members, please indicate your... Hearing no discussion, please indicate your preference by electronic vote, please. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Now, we will go to student discipline. Item 11.1, discipline case 201617/35. The recommendation is alternative placement for the remainder of the school year.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing none. Board members, please indicate your vote by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Six yes votes, one no, one abstention.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is discipline case 201618/38, alternative placement for the remainder of the school year. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
All right. Motion's been made.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. The recommendation is alternative placement for the remainder of the school year. Board members, please indicate... Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Five yes votes, two no, one abstention.
Thank you. 11.3, which is discipline case number 201617/39. The recommendation by the superintendent is time served. What is the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Seven yes votes, one abstention. It passes.
Thank you. 11.4, discipline case 201617/40. The recommendation is alternative placement for the remainder of the school year. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Six yes votes, two abstention. It passes.
Thank you. 11.5, discipline case number 20161741. It's new direction, alternative placement for the remainder of the school year.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Six yes votes, one no, one abstention. It passes.
Thank you. All right. Now, moving to curriculum and instruction, the monthly report. Dr. Bracy?
Yes, Dr. Taylor will come forward at this time to give us this month's curriculum and instructional report.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, and members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. It's my pleasure to give you this month's curriculum and instruction report. I would draw your attention to the written report that you have in your board docs. And in addition to that, we have three students here with us tonight from Churchland Middle School who will be giving us information about the activities within their school. First, we have Bryson Bailey, and as I call your names, would you please come forward? Bryson is an eighth grader at Churchland Middle, and he currently serves as the president of the Churchland Middle School Student Council Association. The first year that our association has become an official chapter of the National Association at Churchland Middle School. As the SCA president, he's leading the chapter in developing and ratifying its constitution and bylaws, in addition to planning motivational pep rallies and planning strategies for increasing students' voices in the school. Brian consistently earns a place on the honor roll and is a current and active member of the CHMS National Junior Honor Society. Outside of school, Bryson enjoys spending time with his family and friends in addition to playing video games. And after graduating from high school, he plans to either join the Navy or pursue a career in information technology. And if Bryson's parents are here, would you please stand? Next, we have Makaiya Brooks. Makaiya's in the eighth grade also and is an avid, award-winning dancer and has competed at the national level. In addition to earning two scholarships to dance schools, she consistently earns platinum and high gold awards for her solo and group dances. She represents Churchland Middle School as a member of our cheerleading team and has demonstrated her commitment to learning while a student at Churchland Middle School by consistently earning a place on the honor roll. She also actively serves the school community as a member of the National Junior Honor Society. And after graduating from high school, Makaiya plans to attend college and medical school to become a neurosurgeon. Will her parents please stand? And we have Miles Hunt. Miles is in the eighth grade also, and he currently serves as the Churchland Middle School Chapter President of the Future Business Leaders of America, which under his leadership won the increased membership award at the Regional FBLA Championship Competition. As the leader of the FBLA, Miles consistently demonstrates his mastery of Robert's Rules of Order as he facilitates chapter meetings. Miles also serves as the Churchland Middle School Student Council Association's Vice President and has consistently earned a place on the honor roll. Miles serves the school community as a member of the National Junior Honor Society, and after graduating from high school, he plans to attend college and law school to become an attorney. Will his parents please stand?
Good evening Superintendent Bracy, Chairman Parent, and Vice Chairwoman, Mrs. Williams, and all School Board Members. My name is Bryson Bailey. I currently serve as the SCA president, and I am here to speak with you about my school, Churchland Middle. Our school has taken extra methods to achieve full accreditation by using programs such as 21st Century and after-school enrichment program to assist students with strategies to ensure success. Some of our caring teachers even allow their students to come in the morning for extra help. Also, many teachers help students with alternate and fun ways to learn using things like Google Classroom, Common Literature, and Kahoot. Yes, our teachers give extra credit that goes towards their grade, but the extra credit is a win-win. Teachers such as my science teacher, Mrs. Weeks, give students an opportunity to boost our grade while obtaining more science knowledge skills that may have not been learned in class. She uses a lot of technology such as programs, J-Lab. Teachers truly are caring at my school, and they go the extra mile to ensure success. Churchland Middle School has a great PBIS incentive called Trucker Bucks. Students earn these bucks by meeting the expectations set forth by our administrators and teachers. Students earn these bucks by displaying good behavior embedded in our GPS. With Trucker Bucks, you can buy yourself into a pep rally, eat outside on the patio at lunch with friends, or place your name in a school drawing to win a variety of prizes. At Churchland Middle School, we have a PBIS affirmation that we recite every day, and it reads, "Today, I will take ownership in my learning experiences. Today, I am guided by my GPS." G, give respect. P, prioritize responsibilities. And always remember, S, safety first because CHMS is my GPS for success. We also have an awesome PTA who has partnered with our school. Our PTA is involved with fundraising and other school events to bring parents, students, and administrators together. Achievements of our PTA make a real difference to our school, providing extra resources and in some cases making it possible for activities such as rewarding honor roll students. Also, our PTA allowed our students to tell their life story with the Reflections Program. As you can see, we have programs in place, teachers who care, and a behavior initiative program with Trucker Bucks and supportive parents, all which make Churchland Middle School a great place to learn. Big changes have been made, and we are on our way towards meeting test requirements. I believe because of what we have done together as a school community, we will succeed. On behalf of my administration, teachers, and the student body of Churchland Middle School, I thank you for allowing me to come before you to talk about the positive things happening at my school.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Makaiya Brooks from Churchland Middle School. I stand before you tonight to highlight just a few of the positive attributes of Churchland Middle School. The first point I'd like to highlight is technology. Having access to the Chromebooks has been really beneficial at some of the new skills we're learning. The teachers utilize a Permythium board with an interactive projector. They use the Permythium boards to give visual explanation on their course subject. Just to name a few, it can be used for PowerPoints, academic games, and to highlight teaching points. Another aspect I would like to add is the manner in which the teachers find effective ways to enhance our learning. An example of that would be when they split us up into small groups to ensure we have a better understanding of the various concepts they are trying to teach. For instance, we have three teachers in my algebra class, so when we split up into those small groups, we have a teacher to assist us in whatever it is we need help in. Lately, we've been preparing for SOL, so the small groups have really helped out, not only for myself, but also the other students in the class. They go off of our latest benchmark scores and split us up based on what we've got incorrect to make sure we do well in the SOLs. For the students that are not able to get all the help they need during class, Churchland Middle School offers a morning and afternoon tutoring program entitled 21st Century, which works on every subject that has an SOL. My final highlight for this evening is the various clubs offered at Churchland Middle School. Just to name a few, we have the Chess Club, International Club, Chrome Club, and National Junior Honor Society. Students who are members in the International Club get the chance to learn new things and be aware of what goes on in other countries. In regards to clubs at the school, I'm a member of the National Junior Honor Society, and I find that not only is it fun, but it helps the kids be a part of something, show leadership skills, and be active in the school environment. In conclusion, I really love how dedicated the teachers are to make sure we learn all that we can.
Greetings, Dr. Eli Bracy, Chairman Parent, and School Board Members. I am Miles Hunt, an eighth grade student at Churchland Middle School. I am also the president of the Future Business Leaders of America and vice president of the Student Council Association. I'm here to speak to you today about wonderful things educationally at Churchland Middle School. The after-school tutoring program, also known as 21st Century, has been effective because not all parents are able to afford personal tutors for their children. It is wonderful to see the commitment of the teachers to help those who require extra assistance to improve the outcome of the students' SOL scores and to ensure our school accreditation. My phenomenal English teacher, Ms. Cheryl Osmann, and the low amount of students make certain that we are more focused on learning, receiving better results, and have more opportunities to participate. Additionally, Ms. Osmann incorporates smaller groups to reinforce standards that may not have been a success on the first try. Groups are based on data from testing and is placed in focused instructional plans. In algebra, we've been preparing for the SOLs by working in various groups to enhance weak skills. With three instructors, it helps us get different ways to improve educational resources and ways of learning. In math eight, Ms. Rowntree has been implementing cooperative groups with mixed-level students, hands-on manipulatives, the use of technology with interactive websites, and peer tutoring to receive the best outcomes possible. Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's give all of these wonderful leaders a big round of applause. Thank you.
Oh, you want me to say something about textbooks?
Please.
Okay. It has come to my attention that there was a question raised around textbooks and students' ability to have textbooks in Portsmouth. And I want to dispel any rumors because there is no shortage of textbooks for our students. Textbooks are available, and in instances where students may need textbooks, we have funds available to order additional textbooks. But I know that in some content areas, we are not relying on textbooks for the main source of learning. So, it may be that students have not been assigned a textbook to take home because the curriculum is based upon a number of other supplemental materials. So, I do want to dispel any of those concerns or rumors and let parents and the public and the board know that we're very committed to providing all materials for students, and we make a diligent effort to do that. And if there are any parents out there who have a specific concern, I would encourage them to contact me or Dr. Michael Kromarty, and we can discuss it with them independently.
Okay. All right. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Dr. Taylor, thank you for making that statement because it was said in open session at City Council, so thank you for addressing that. And I know we have the written report and that we don't, you know, want to... But there is one thing on there that I have to... It's my passion, it's my love, and it comes from the Office of Science. Portsmouth Public School's first robotic team will compete in their first robotic championship in St. Louis, Missouri. They left yesterday. And... I can't wait to hear about their adventures when they come back and just what a wonderful experience for those kids, and I just wanted to say thank you to you. Thank you to Dr. Bracy, and thank you to Ms. Nelson for keeping this and pushing this and making this happen because I remember when robotics was three kids and one teacher, and I'm going, what are you going to do with the robot? But now I am all in on this. So go Royal Robotics in St. Louis, but I just wanted to let everybody know since it wasn't going to be out, and I look forward to hearing back from them. So Ms. Nelson, Dr. Taylor, Dr. Bracy, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines, I do want you to know that I've been keeping up with them. You know, I had the, one of the advisors put the app on my phone, so they have been participating today. So if you see me looking at the phone, I'm keeping up with them. And Ms. Nelson, you probably already know this, but right now, this is probably the end of competition for today, so right now we're 29 out of 68 in the world competition, so. So that's just day one, so we know a couple more days, we're going to keep moving up.
Let's retweet that one.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say to the students of Simonsdale and Churchland Middle, thank you so much for presenting. You inspire me and motivate me and make me Portsmouth proud, and I just feel like we have to create more opportunities for you guys, so thank you so much for being bold and brave and speaking about the positive things that's happening in Portsmouth Public Schools. I also want to give a shout out to the Office of Social Studies for collecting 1,064 pounds of food for the food bank, so thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. We have special ed, so I'll wait for that.
Yes, right. Next item is the annual Special Education Plan in Part B flow-through for 2017-18.
This is a call for the electronic vote. I believe the board discussed it at the last meeting.
We did.
Is for approval?
Okay. Motion's been made, and second, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed in the plan that we do, do we have a, I noticed that there's been amended about the jail. Do we still have a, we have a teacher at the jail?
Yes, sir.
I know many years ago, we did, and then we didn't, so I was looking in the application, and I wanted to ask that we have a teacher.
Yes, sir, we do, and the agreement with the jail has been revised this year. It does not have to be revised every year, but we had a new superintendent at the regional jail, and the old agreement did not have Dr. Bracy's signature, so those are the only changes were new signatures.
And how many students and mates, do you know about?
I do not know her caseload, Mr. Parent, but I can get it for you.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, any other discussion? Board members, please indicate your vote by electronic vote, please. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Great.
Thank you.
We got a plan, send it to Richmond. Next item is the presentation, GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Dr. Bracy.
Ms.
Ms. Brittany Dorch, it's my pleasure to present to you this certificate. It's from the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the City of Portsmouth, Virginia School Board for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Mr. Wiggins, if you look forward to the.
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Somebody's not, okay, okay, understand. Mr. Wiggins.
We're pleased to present the monthly attendance report for March, and I would simply remind the board and members of the audience that we compare the figures for one year ago. When we look at our preschools for 2016, it was 89.97 percent, and for the current year, 88.97 percent, and it took a decline, a drop really, of one percentage point. Taking first-place honors for March 2017 is Churchland Preschool with 92.09 percent, and coming in second place is Emily N. Spong Preschool with 88.09 percent, and the difference separating the first place and the second place winner is four percentage points. We next look at the elementary schools. For 2016, it was 94.50 percent, and for the current year, 93.31 percent, and again, a slight decline of 1 and 19 one-hundredths percentage point. Coming in first place is Churchland Primary and Intermediate with 96.23 percent, and taking second-place honors is Hodges Manor with 95.50 percent, and the difference separating the first-place winner from the second-place winner is 73 hundredths of a percentage point. And if I'm not mistaken, I do see the principal of Hodges Manor Elementary School. And because of the many activities going on at the school level, the decision was made not to ask those principals to change their schedules simply to be down here. We move next to our middle schools. For 2016, it was 92.96 percent, and for the current year, 92.29 percent. And again, we experienced a slight drop in attendance of 67 hundredths of a percentage point. Taking first-place honors is Churchland Middle School with 93.09 percent, and coming in second place is William E. Waters with 92.65 percent, and the difference separating the first and second-place winners is 44 one-hundredths of a percentage point. I know the principal of Churchland Middle, oh, was here. We move next to our high schools. In 2016, it was 91.71 percent, and for the current year, 89.30 percent, and again, there's a decline of 20, I'm sorry, of 2.41 percent. Once again, Churchland High School took first-place honors with 94.90 percent, which Wilson came in second place with 88.43 percent. And of the four divisions, the biggest difference appears at the high school level. The difference separating Churchland from Wilson is 6 and 47 one-hundredths percentage When we look at the school division as a whole, for the, this month, the entire school division and all, and the division as a whole, and the four divisions experienced a decline. Overall, in the school division, we experienced a slight decline of 1 and 25 hundredths percentage point. The next slide is a summation showing you how each of the divisions fared. At the middle, at the preschool, a decline of 1 percentage point. At the elementary, 1 and 19 hundredths of a percentage point. At the middle school level, 67 hundredths of a percentage point. The high school, 2 and 41 one-hundredths percentage points, and the school division, 1 and 25 hundredths percentage points. And once again, we do want to extend our heartfelt appreciation to everyone involved in the all-important task of getting students to and from schools.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Anybody, I've seen nothing, okay? Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. I just want to let the parents know that I know the hour is late. If you would like to stay for the meeting, we would love to have you, but I know that you have children and you might want to gather them home, so feel free that you can leave at this time. But we would love to have you stay for the whole meeting, but we understand. The next item on the agenda is the resolution, Recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, May 7 through the 12, 2017. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. And we know that this is a special time where we have the opportunity to recognize our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week, so what, to present this, we wanted to make sure that we brought in some of our best and our brightest that were recognized by their peers, and we have with us, and as I call your name, would you please come down, our Elementary School Teachers of the Year, we have co-winners. The first is Mrs. Bertina C. Mars from Hodges Manor Elementary School. Ms. Kashiba V. Cannon, James Hurst Elementary School. Our Middle School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Michelle G. E. Fat, Cradup Middle School. Our High School Teacher of the Year, who's also our citywide Teacher of the Year, from I.C. Norcom High School, Ms. Sandra L. Album.
Resolution, whereas teaching is an honorable profession, one which all Americans know well because of their personal experiences, and whereas the National Education Association, the NEA, and the National Parent Teacher Association, the NPTA, spearheaded the annual observance of National Teacher Appreciation Week, which commenced in 1984, and whereas National Teacher Appreciation Week, May the 7 through 12, 2017, recognizes an educator's significance to our nation's future and to our students' future well-being, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board convey its profound appreciation and the heartfelt gratitude of the Portsmouth City to those individuals involved in the teaching-learning process for their diligence, for their zeal, and for their care of our historic Seaport City's young people, and be it further resolved that the school board salute the school division's teacher corps as a manifestation of respect and support for the magnificent role they play in the educational process, and that the school board designate May 9, 2017, as National Teacher Appreciation Day, and be it finally resolved that this resolution of commendation be made a part of the school board's official minutes, and that copies be sent to all administrative units, schools, and municipal libraries for public display.
Board members, you have heard the resolution. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Amen.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion other than standing up and clapping and everything you want to do? So if you will by electronic vote, somebody, would you do mine, and by electronic vote, we will vote, and it will be entered into the minutes. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, is that everybody's green light on? Very good, very good. It's official. Thank you, teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's just getting into the good stuff. These lovely minutes that we all love to read every month. Next item is the approval of the March 9, 2017, and the March 23, 2017 minutes. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, do you have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you read the public comments rules, and do we have speakers?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Ms. Brenda Joseph.
Okay, I don't see Mrs. Joseph here.
Okay. Ms. Shirley Cherry.
Bracy and Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Parent. My name is Shirley Cherry, and I was formerly a retired teacher from Portsmouth Public School as a reading specialist as well as a classroom teacher, and I'm here tonight just to talk about the previous superintendent and the school board made some policies and decisions that were devastating, that are devastating to our community and to our present schools. In 2008, our high school on-time graduation rate was 56.7, and. superintendent, they had to have a two-point-oh in order to GPA, in order to graduate. They also had to pass Algebra I, all four parts, all four modules, and ninth grade English before they could move into another grade. Most of them died there in the ninth grade. This is what they said. They give up in the ninth grade. And we know that also, in during that time, children were, teachers were not allowed to fail the children. They had to just move on. All the children had to do was to come to class, and they would automatically be moved to the next grade. And that's a policy that we still are into now. So therefore, the children just did not strive. We have to look at some of the problems that we have by having these children, these children in this poverty situation. We know that we have to educate them in a different way. We have to educate, we have to have smaller classrooms. We have to have, teach different programs. We have to teach them in a different way. We cannot teach them the same way. And we have to realize that we are in poverty. This area, our schoolchildren, we have maybe about, we have a few schools now that are one-hundred percent free and reduced lunch. We have, they have, in our kindergarten, we have twenty-five children to one teacher. They come from preschool, knowing a lot, but once they go in there, they don't, you know, they can't function because the teacher can't teach. Yes, the teachers need a raise, but they need some conditions. We have to, you have to make things available for them. You got to help them to be able to teach. No matter how much money they get, if we don't fix the situation, they're just going to continue being stressed out. We have to look at our paraprofessionals. They want to work with the children. We need everybody working with these children. But with them on clock, they have check-in on the clock, they cannot be at school all the time where they need to be trained. They have to check out and, you know, be on the clock. So I see my time is moving out, but these are some materials that we need to see that every teacher reads. A framework for understanding poverty, teaching with poverty in mind. These books are something that really, we have to know the population we are teaching. And we better wake up because we are teaching children that are coming from parents that dropped out of school, and they are, they just can't help their children because they can't help themselves. So as school board members, we are asking you to please try to do something to help the children as well as the teachers. We have to teach them the basic reading, writing, and arithmetic. We have, well, I see my time is up. But I would like to also, if I don't mind.
Board members, would you allow her at least thirty seconds to finish?
Sure.
Okay. And I, I would just like to, I have just compiled some things with some facts in it that, it's just some ideas. I have been doing a lot of studying. I have worked with the people in the public housing. I had a reading program there for seven years, and I know, and I feel them. I have, you know, been on both sides, and I know what the parents are going through. And, you know, so I just wanted to, if you don't mind, if you would just like to look at this and see if some of the suggestions that I have put here, there's something that we can work with to try to help make a difference. I think I got one too. To help, to make a difference.
Thank you. Stay at the podium, Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Shirley. I do understand where you're coming from. There is a new age of children, and to, to understand and to teach them effectively, you do have to understand the demographics. And I think what we're trying to do as a board and, and Dr. Bracy as a school system is provide that cultural awareness training so that teachers are aware of that culture and, and background of children. But like you said, that is something that is needed for kids to, to learn. It's, it's different times, and it's a different environment. So thank you.
Ms. Cherry, I want to say to you, many, many years that you have dedicated your life as a, as a classroom teacher. I want to commend you because you've always been there for children, and your passion has been there, and your dedication has been there. I don't know whether you attended the Tuesday meeting with the city council where about twenty-two, twenty-three speakers spoke on behalf of the needs of the children and the teachers. This board is very passionate about trying to get raises, keeping up our, our highly-qualified teachers, and doing everything that we can to give our children the best resources so they, as you said, so that they can have a better future. So I just want to thank you very much because you've always been there, and you've always come before the board, and you've always been very passionate about, about children, and I want to thank you for that. And we have Ms. Heinz.
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Shirley, I just wanted to say thank you, much like Board Member Atkinson and Chairman Parent, because you do come before us. You bring us facts. You bring us a list of suggestions as well, and you're available to have a conversation with. So I wanted to thank you for that. But I wanted to talk about the Algebra I requirement. That is not just a Portsmouth requirement. That is a state requirement.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The Algebra I requirement, when you, when you talked about having to pass the, the pieces of Algebra I, that is not just a Portsmouth requirement. That is a state requirement. So we are trying to figure out, and we still struggle with Algebra I, and we've had these conversations through curriculum instruction and from Dr. Nichols. How do, how do we, how do we get them there? And we know that Algebra I is a struggle. And the same thing with English XI. That is a reading and a writing test. Both of those are barrier tests, and those are the areas in which our children struggle. And we know that, and we are working with curriculum. And I can't wait to share this with Dr. Taylor, with our, to work with our curriculum. I can't wait to, to dive into it and give you a call and talk to you about a few things too. But I wanted to say thank you for coming before us. Thank you for doing what you've always done. We appreciate it.
Ms. Williams.
Again, thank you, Ms. Shirley. You always come and, and share with us valuable information. I would like to say that in 2016, all of Portsmouth Public Schools are fully accredited with the Graduation Index, which the state says is eighty-five percent. I think Churchland High was ninety-two percent or something like that. I.C. Norcom was eighty-seven, and Wilson was eighty-five. So we've come a long way, but we did, they did change that standard of, I think Portsmouth was the only school in the Commonwealth that required the two-point-zero.
They did change.
And they changed that. So we have made a great amount of progress, and, and I do agree with you that probably now some of the kids that we have are some of those parents that dropped out and are not able to help them. But, but thank you. And every day, I think our teachers work really hard, the people in the schools. If you visit the schools, I, I'm amazed at the work that they do. And I just left an induction ceremony at John Tyler for the National Honor Society, and the students, the way they speak, I'm really impressed. I mean, and someone is doing some hard work out there. And I know we have a lot of challenges, but, but of course, some, some of those are doing, some of the teachers are really, really working hard. But thank, thanks again.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers, Madam Clerk? Okay?
Mr. Sergio Neal.
Good evening, Portsmouth School Board, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, and everyone else. Oh, good evening, everyone. All of you are equally important. My name is Sergio Neal. I am now a resident of Portsmouth again. I come to you tonight to add a different perspective. I was one of the people who spoke up for the teacher raises at the city council meeting, and I agree with you a hundred percent. One of my teachers that were teaching, that taught me when I was in school, is still teaching in Portsmouth Public Schools today. And a two-point-five is really a struggle to even say to give her because I think because of the school that she taught me at Hunt Map, if you taught there, you need about a ten percent raise if you're still teaching in Portsmouth Public Schools today. So again, I, I agree with that wholeheartedly. The other thing is this, I have, I'm a research person now more than ever, and I've done some research. And I have done research particularly with Hampton University. The situation is, and this is how I see it, if city council does not decide to give the funding for the teacher raises, what is something that could be done to make that happen? What I found that when Hampton University was in a financial struggle, Dr. Harvey, the president of Hampton University, gave a million dollars of his salary, of his personal salary to fund some of those, to fund some of those raises. When his full-time staff was, when the staff, some of the full-time staff were in the struggle, he gave over a hundred thousand dollars to fund some of their raises. My challenge is that with some of Portsmouth Public Schools administrative team, if the decision was to come down, that they could not, that city council would not give the funding for a raise, which one of them, or would all of them be willing to take a portion of that salary and fund those raises? It may seem like a crazy concept. However, I am a big leadership person. I am an operations manager for a company myself. Any one of my staff members were here right now, they could tell you that when it comes to raises, I am the very last person to get a raise. I right now could be, I technically qualified to make, in my position, I could make easily over a hundred thousand dollars a year just doing what I do. I don't make anywhere close to that because, first of all, I work for a small business. Second of all, I have staff people that come before me. My staff won a contest today. I asked them, I said, what do you all want to do with the money? Not me, because it's not about me. And I would think some of Portsmouth, the administrative leadership would feel that same concept. Because, because when you have subordinates working for you, you as a leader are only as good as your subordinates. If your subordinates failed, then you have, you have failed to do your job as a leader. I can guarantee you right now, a lot of teachers don't teach because of the money, because teachers don't make a whole lot of money. They teach because they love what they do. But I could guarantee you that some of the ones that have left would have stayed if they felt the support from their leadership. And unfortunately, when it came down to the last exit survey that came out, student discipline that had came down, that was said, that somebody had said that there was an issue, was not nowhere near up there. It didn't even come down like that. So again, the challenge is what is the leadership prepared to do to support those teacher raises? And I have the article that was in Hampton University's paper. If the Sergeant at Arms would come and distribute, I would greatly appreciate it, about that raise, about how Dr. Harvey at Hampton University gave his own personal salary to make those raises for that staff at. I mean, it, I mean, some, and I know the administrative staff, they don't have a million dollars of their salary to be able to give, but something is better than nothing. And I can almost guarantee that those teachers were greatly appreciated. So again, and then the other challenge is this, and this is for the parents that have teachers, that have kids in Portsmouth Public Schools. Every time that there is a budget situation, the parents need to be right here, sitting with this school board, forcing their opinions to let, to make it be known what's, what needs to happen. Because guess what? Those parents are tax-paying citizens. I got my tax, my first Portsmouth property tax bill in the mail the other day, and trust me, it was higher than any other city I've lived in. But I was proud to get it, and I'm proud to pay it, knowing that a portion of it is going to this division that helped me to get where I'm at today. So again, the other, again, parents, I, I want y'all to watch this video and hear me say it. Come on out, not only to the budget, to any situation. Because guess what? These people can't do their job without you, and I thank y'all for listening. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Williams? We have, we have some comments that we would like.
Right, yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Neal. Sergio and I, we have our discussions from time to time. I just wanted to say that Dr. Harvey is a multimillionaire. Hampton University is a private institution. They have big endowments that he raises millions of dollars. I know him personally. And I, I remember when he did this, and this was really good. He wanted to make sure his staff, some of the line, frontline workers received a raise. He gave a million dollars because he is very wealthy. He owns Pepsi-Cola Company. And I, I think your concept is really good, and, and, you know, you talk a lot about industry, private industry. We are a government agency. Our funding comes from the state and the city. So we are not, it's not like we can raise revenue. We can't raise funds for anything. He, he is wealthy through his business, his business dealings. So I, I think it would be good, but our administrators as well, they work hard, and they want a raise as well. And to say to, you know, to compensate for those that the city is not giving us any money is quite, quite difficult for me as a board member to ask them. My, my point of view or my perspective would be that we have to look in the budget very closely. If, if city council does not agree to fund us, we are going to do our very best to educate the children, and we will continue. But thank you for your feedback in this article.
Right. And I, I greatly appreciate that. And if I just have a minute, that was just an idea, you know, I mean, looking at it, you know, any leadership position, no matter who you work for, it's taking care of your subordinates is the most important thing. Because again, when, when it comes, I know when they do my review, they, they look at my team and how I'm able to develop them. If I leave this earth right now, how many people in my store that work for me are able to step into my position and be successful? That's how I look at my judgment.
Right.
And I greatly, and I hope that at, at the end of the day, somebody in the division is willing to do the same thing.
Okay. Hold up. Please, got two more states. Dr. Werdicker.
Yes, Mr. Neal, thank you. And something that you brought up, and that's leadership, which I think is very important. And when we look at the leadership with our city council, we have a mayor, a city manager, and members of the city council that know they have the money to give to the schools for the raises. There are positions in the city that are vacant. Okay? We have fire positions, we have police positions. I think there are sixty-nine positions with the fire department, but there are one-hundred-and-fifty-six positions overall in the city that are vacant, and that's money that can be used for the schools. I find it unconscionable that a city council would refuse to fund the future of children. These are children we are talking about, members of our community that don't have a voice. Adults are supposed to do the right thing for our children, and this is very troubling to me. I've been troubled by this for months now, to know that the money is there, but there is a refusal to do the right thing with the funds. I appreciate you coming tonight and, and talking about leadership. And as you said, I believe that it's going to require bringing people out.
Hold up. Please, got two more stake. Dr. Werderker.
Yes, Mr. Neal, thank you. And something that you brought up, and that's leadership, which I think is very important. And when we look at the leadership with our city council, we have a mayor, a city manager, and members of the city council that know they have the money to give to the schools for the raises. There are positions in the city that are vacant. Okay? We have fire positions, we have police positions. I think there are 69 positions with the fire department. But there are 156 positions overall in the city that are vacant. And that's money that can be used for the schools. I find it unconscionable that a city council would refuse to fund the future of children. These are children we are talking about, members of our community that don't have a voice. Adults are supposed to do the right thing for our children. And this is very troubling to me. I've been troubled by this for months now, to know that the money is there, but there is a refusal to do the right thing with the funds. I appreciate you coming tonight and, and talking about leadership. And as you said, I believe that it's going to require bringing people out in force to demand that the city council do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. And I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Cherry for, for her words as well. She's came up a couple times, and it has not been for naught. It's got me thinking a lot as an educator, and also Mr. Neal. You know, this topic is coming up, and of course, it's because it's the budget season and so forth. And as a classroom teacher myself, I would be amiss to say that I wouldn't want a, a pay raise or, or more money. But I also think with, as citizens are discussing, be it through social media or conversations, or even as teachers that has reached out too, a lot of things that's going on, you know, we're not the only school district that is having trouble with getting qualified teachers or, or the best of the best. This is becoming more of a national issue more than anything else. Let's just face it. People are not going into education. And, and a lot of those reasons, I believe, is we can say it's about the money, and a large part of it, if it is. I mean, I kid you not, probably if you paid me $125,000 a year with everything that I do, you know, there's a lot of intangibles that's in play. But I think for many teachers and so forth, it does come down to leadership. It comes down to, do they feel like they're supported? Do they feel like that their, their administration has got their back? I mean, I, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, the child of today that we are having in a classroom is very different from the child of even 10 years. I see that in my own classroom. And very different on multiple levels, be it learning styles to over social environments and, and so forth. I think that's why, on a long-term perspective, we really need to hone in on what we are very good at here in Portsmouth. We've got such capabilities with our STEM and STAR base, as been pointed out earlier. We have opportunities, I think, on a long-term for CTE, Career Technical Education, more so than what we're doing. And I think that's the way that we would start to thrive even more going in those areas. But make no mistake about it, the classroom today is a very different place than before. And money in and of itself is just not going to, to fix it. There's, teachers got to feel like they're supported. They got to know that, that someone has, has their back, be it parents, administrators, and the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any more speakers? Okay.
Ms. Imani Mills.
Good evening, Superintendent Bracy, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, and School Board members. I'm Imani Mills, a student of Woodrow Wilson High School, and I would like to take, to thank Ms. Allen for inviting me to come and share with you some of the activities that I have been part of as a member of the Woodrow Wilson High School Key Club. As an active participant, I have fed the homeless as a part of the Winter Shelter Program with Portsmouth Volunteers for the homeless. This past weekend, we cleaned the streets in the Mount Hermit neighborhood as a part of Keep Portsmouth Beautiful and Earth Day. This weekend, a group of us will be attending the Key Leader Leadership Retreat sponsored by the Kiwanis. Key Leader is a week, a weekend leadership program that focuses on service leadership as one of the first and most meaningful leadership development experiments that we, as young people, will have. We learned that the most important lesson of leadership comes from helping others succeed. As a club advisor for many activities at the Woodrow Wilson High, at Woodrow Wilson High School, Ms. Roberts is constantly busy connecting with others to find opportunities for us to give back to the community. When I met Ms. Allen, we were doing a fundraiser with Westmoreland Church, a youth association with Mr. Tyrone Hines, to raise funds to attend the Capitol District Convention this past March. Next month, with the Woodrow Wilson PTSA, we are having a pre-Mother's Day gospel extravaganza to raise funds to help leadership opportunities. Even though I am graduating this year, I want to personally and publicly, publicly thank Ms. Roberts for helping me become a better leader and succeed in the things that I would like to do. And I just want to thank again Ms. Allen, Ms. Allen for extending this invitation.
Thank you. And while you're, while you're thanking Ms. Allen, I'm going to call on Ms. Allen.
Don't leave.
No, don't leave.
Number one, thank you so much for accepting my invite to come here tonight. I am so proud of you and the work that you've been doing. I think it's extremely important that we have more students come to us and tell us what's going on and how their experiences in our schools are. So I commend you. I look forward to seeing you graduate. Where are you going to college?
Livingston College.
All right. I look forward to seeing great things from you. Thank you for your service to our city. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on board agenda items? All right, thank you. All right, we're moving to Human Resources and Operations Report. Dr. Bracy?
Yes, I will call on Mr. Scott Ziegler at this time to come forward.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, members of the board. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. As usual, when it comes to my time on the agenda, time is getting late. But I would like to take just a moment to point a couple of things out in my written report, and that is an invitation to all of you next Wednesday, May the 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at IC Norcom High School. If you would please come and join us as we host a job fair for potential candidates, both teachers and non-teachers all across the division. We are happy to host them here, and we'd love for you all to come out and brag about Portsmouth Public Schools and all that we have to offer here in Portsmouth. And I would also like to wish some luck. I don't have the names submitted yet, but we do have some bus drivers going next week to compete in the annual bus driver rodeo. We have taken home trophies in this event before, so we're hoping for another good showing in the bus driver rodeo. I'm happy to answer any questions. If there are none, I would ask the board to please consider the April transaction report.
The employee transaction report from April, what is the board's pleasure?
Motion for approval.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? And second, we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is budget and planning. Dr. Bracy?
Yes. Ms. Dorch will come at this time to give the budget and planning report.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, Dr. Bracy, and all School Board members. The first item is related to the purchasing contract. This is for paving services that our operations department has reviewed with purchasing and with our MWB program administrator, and is recommending a ward to Blair Brothers for paving an amount of $257,000. This is a two-year term with three-year renewal options.
Motion's been made. And second, do any board members have any questions regarding this contract? Hearing none. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous. I'm sorry.
Ma'am?
Did Mr. Lamb vote?
It's not working. Now it works.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is the consideration of this TCPN Cooperative Contract Number R160903. Dorch?
The contract before you is for 421 classroom interactive panels. This is the model, it's a newer model that our IT department and our instructional IT department have determined to be the best fit for PPS. Total purchase is around $1.7 million, and this is funds from both grants and general fund to cover.
Okay. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion for approval.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second, board members, do you have any discussion regarding this contract? Hearing none. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is the financial budget report for March. Dorch?
The March budget report has been provided. We are steadily monitoring our burn rate and instituting some new techniques to make sure that our departments and our schools purchase and utilize their budgets for the items that they need.
Okay. Is there, what is the board's pleasure?
Motion for approval.
Motion's been made. There's second, any discussion? Ms. Hines, Mrs. Hines?
And this is a question for anybody who can answer, not just necessarily for Ms. Dorch. But as we go through this budget process with city council, I'm just going to ask that we get clarification on encumbrances, to make sure that we have an understanding of encumbrances, 90, 120, whatever it is, to make sure that we are in agreement with what June 30 and June 30 means for funding, so that we are not stuck in another battle of the words at this moment in time. So if we can just check to make sure that we are all understanding with that, so that we are aware of what the expectations are. And I can't, I'm not going to ask you how many encumbrances we're going to have past June 30, because that's impossible to tell at this moment in time. So I wanted to thank you for your burn rate. Thank you for this. And I know the city council gets a copy of this after each meeting, so.
They do.
Thank you for that practice, and let's keep that one going. Thank you.
And I will say that the last two years, we've not had any comment. So I guess we're doing everything right. Okay? All right, the next item on the agenda is the considera, ma'am? Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm trying to put, what is the board's pleasure? Please, electronic vote. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. We'll get, we'll get through this tonight. Oh, man. All right, the next item on the agenda is consideration of OPEB, which means Other Post-Employment Benefits Consolidation. And I think Dr. Bracy, our attorney, is going to make a presentation. Mr. Sam Meekins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the School Board and Superintendent. Bracy, just to, as a place to start here, we've been asked, we being the School Board, has been asked to dip into the OPEB trust fund, the amount I am not sure of, but I've heard numbers from $3 million to $5 million, in order to provide those funds back to the city for use by the city in meeting budgetary needs. There was a presentation made this week to the city council. I did not have the pleasure of being there, but I have been provided a copy of the report that was shown to the public at large. And I was asked to provide to the School Board my sense of what that report said and how we could deal with it. I did look at that report, and Dean, if you can give me that first screen, I'd appreciate it. As I understood it, and I did not hear it, so it may have been explained differently, but the thing that I saw was this concept that all we need to do is direct the trustee, the directed trustee, to write a check to the city, and the funds would come out of this trust, and that if there was any problem with that, we could go to the court and get the court approval, and the city would join us. And, and I want to make sure one is clear. I have a wonderful relationship with the city attorney's office, is a very bright lawyer. This is not a personal issue. I think it's more of an opinion rather than legal advice being given. I'm going to give you legal advice, and I think if you follow that opinion, I thought that was a bit cavalier. I don't believe we have that capacity to simply engage in those acts. This is why. The trust fund, this was created in 2008 by resolution of the School Board pursuant to authority granted by the Virginia General Assembly in 2008. They enacted a statute that allowed these OPEBs or benefit trusts for employees to be created. And right on the heels of that statute, the school division enacted their OPEB in 2008. The statutory reference is 15.2-2-1547. The thing to note is that the statute allows several vehicles to hold these funds, and the School Board of 2008 elected to use a trust concept. That's going to be very important in what we're going to talk about here. Now, a trust is a separate entity. It's its own operating vehicle. And trusts are operated by trustees. The statute authorized the school division to create a finance board that would handle generally the financing in this trust. The finance board created by the Portsmouth Public Schools consisted of the chairman, vice chairman, superintendent, the CFO, director of accounting and benefits, and a representative at large. All this was put in a resolution in 2008. Of course, the people have changed, but the board remains the same, or the trustees remain the same, as it was established then. If we can go to the next one, Dean. Of course, this trustees that we appointed, they did not hold the money. We are accumulating virtually millions of dollars in this, or a few million dollars, in this trust fund, so we can pay future employee benefits as they become due. And the, these trustees of the fund would not hold that money. They would find a financial institution that had to wear with all to do that. And that was done, and Wells Fargo is the one who is now what we will call a directed trustee. So we have the trustees of the fund. They placed the money under the hands and control of Wells Fargo. I'll stop walking away from the microphone. I'm like I'm in court or something. And Wells Fargo really handles the day-to-day investment moves, and they, there are meetings with us periodically about how the system is performing and what we should be doing. There is a trust agreement with Wells Fargo. And Section 1.4 of the trust agreement with Wells Fargo, I think is very informative as regards the school board's authority to just direct that a check be written out of that fund. And, and I've written it on here on the display, and I will read it into the record. It says, "Except as may otherwise be expressly authorized by federal laws and or laws of the state of Virginia, the school system shall not have any right, title, interest, claim, or demand whatsoever in or to the trust fund held by the directed trustee, nor shall any funds be applied for purposes other than the exclusive benefit of current and former employees and their beneficiaries prior to the satisfaction of the liabilities of the plan, except to the extent provided in Section 4.1." So in other words, under that trust agreement, that money's not ours. That money has been set aside for the explicit purpose, explicit purpose, of satisfying the obligations for this benefit plan that was put in place. Now, it does say, except for as provided in 4.1. Look at 4.1. I've given you a very brief synopsis of what 4.1A says. And what it says is Wells will not be liable to you if we do what you tell us to do with that money. So this may be where the city says, well, just tell them to do it, and they'll do it. Well, all this says is Wells says if we do what Well, all this says is, Wells says, if we do what you tell us to do with the money, we're not gonna be liable to you for it. So what is the role of the school board? Well, all, the statute that created this concept, and which we followed in two thousand and eight, says that all contributions to the trust fund by the school system shall be irrevocable. We can't get it back. Now, that's set forth in the trust agreement with Wells, section one point one, put up there, but it's also set forth in fifteen point two dash fifteen forty-four, that is the law of Virginia, deposits and any earnings on those deposits shall be irrevocable. It further says, "The funds shall be dedicated to providing benefits to retirees and their beneficiaries in accord with the plan." So now, under the trust documents, we don't have any right, title, and interest in the money. Under the trust documents, our contributions, ours, and I speak as the school board, when I say ours, are irrevocable. Under the, under the state law, the deposits and any earnings thereon are irrevocable. So what role does the school board play at all in this? Why are we still here? Well, you have two roles, first of all, you created the plan, and the second one is, you should fund the plan. You may fund it annually, or whatever, but as long as there's sufficient funds in the plan to meet the obligations that will arise in the future. And please bear in mind, this is a projected obligation, because the plan pays retirees' benefits. People working today are accruing the right to those benefits if they retire, so they're not drawing them yet, but the plan has to be able to fund them when those people knock on the door for their benefits that they have worked and earned over their careers here. Next one, please. I'll go back to the law, it's a convenient place to go for a lawyer, and it says that section fifteen point two dash fifteen forty-four, what can the board do to this plan? Here's what your options are, you can revise or discontinue the plan, you could stop it, or you could transfer assets held in the trust, you could transfer the assets held in the trust, but it's gotta be to other trusts established pursuant to this article. So you can't just transfer it out to go to buy a school bus, you could transfer it out to another trust under this article. And then it says later, in the same statute, "Any amendment, suspension, revocation, or transfer shall not have the effect of diverting assets of any trust to purposes other than the exclusive benefit of the active or former employees or their dependents." Exclusive benefit of them. Now, section C also says, school division, you could transfer as long as you, for the exclusive benefit of those employees. You can repeal or terminate the plan, means to stop it, we're not gonna do it anymore. If you stopped it tomorrow, I would tell you that you would have to let it play out for employees who've already become vested, it would be, be some continuing obligations that would accrue over time. But you would have the power to repeal or terminate the plan. But other than that, you don't have the assets, they're not yours, you can't get back what you put in, you can transfer it, but it's gotta be to another trust to pay for the exclusive benefits of the employees. Can I see the next screen? The question that I would typically ask myself, if a client confronts me with this problem, is I wanna do this, can I? And the first thing I would ask is, who can complain? You can do what you wanna do, nobody can complain, I guess, subject to moral judgment. Employees could theoretically complain, if you were to do something with this fund that would leave them at risk of getting their benefits when they accrued, they could theoretically complain that that is not proper conduct. The city, I guess, could theoretically complain, to the extent that they felt like we were jeopardizing the honesty and integrity of the city and its various divisions by having a fund going to default where we haven't managed it properly. The directed trustee, that as well, could probably complain, send that money over here, no? Well, you're not gonna be liable if you do, no? Or yes? I don't know, we haven't asked them. But they could certainly complain, 'cause they are a trustee. The finance board trustees could complain, and I don't know whether the Board of Education have any complaint here or not, I just don't know. One other thing, just to make sure you understand, when I talk about a trustee, that is a word that is used in the law a lot, and it has a peculiar but particular meaning. A trustee is someone who agrees not to act in their own best interest. A trustee is someone who is told by the law that you will act in the best interest of the person for whom you are protecting, for instance, the beneficiaries of this OPEB trust. Every step a trustee does should be in their best interest. You can make mistakes, you could be wrong, but you should be acting always in their best interest. You could be liable if you don't act in their best interest. So starting with the hypothesis that I'm acting in your best interest, I'm gonna transfer three million dollars worth of money to somebody else, is sort of an odd concept right out of the gate. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, I'm not saying it wouldn't be valid, but it would be a hurdle that you would have to overcome as a trustee, is why that's in their best interests. I think that, one more, please. Now, the, since I started planning this presentation, we've had another communication from the city that has said, would you consider merging the city plan under OPEB with the, uh, school division plan under OPEB? And I've looked back at all of the statutes, et cetera, that are in place, and I do not find the word merge in there. It does say, and that's why I've put this up here, to be fair to everyone, that under fifteen point two dash fifteen forty-four, the governing body of any city, and I've sort of taken out the superfluous language with the dashes here, 'cause that would've been too much verbiage, "The governing body of any city may enter into agreements with elected school boards that provide schools within its boundaries to permit any such school board to participate in any trust established by the governing body of such city." So they can establish their plan as a trust, or theoretically as another type of plan, and they could invite us, you, to participate, and you could participate. So there is the ability to combine the plans. The real question becomes, however, what happens to the already existing OPEB trust? I believe the concept is, well, if you put them together, all that money just comes over and goes into the one unified trust, and that could be used for those benefits. Next one, please. Here's a problem I have, if it doesn't call for merger, then what we must be doing is transferring assets to a new trust. And if we're transferring assets to a new trust, the statute says you can transfer to any other trust, provided, however, any transfer of assets shall not have the effect of diverting the assets of any trust to purposes other than the exclusive benefit of the active or former employees. So if I transferred the money to the city trust, it wouldn't no longer be used for the exclusive benefit of our employees under the trust. Now, I guess you could argue that that's not what it says, that as long as you're paying OPEB-type benefits, I don't care who it's to, it would work, but I don't believe that's what that statute says, I don't think that's what it's contemplating. So I'm not going to say this can't be done, I'm going to say it would be an arduous process, and maybe it could be accomplished, it would take some time, we'd have to make sure everyone's protected from potentialities such as five years from now, the trust failing, and somebody knocking on the door saying, where's my money, and you saying, I don't have it anymore because I gave three million dollars away, or whatever. So we'd have to protect everybody in that instance. And before we do that, I wanted you to know where I saw as, as our legal status. I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any board members have any questions? For Mr. Meekins? Thank you, sir. The item before you, and this is the motion, and I will read, I will read the motion, make sure my mic is on. The motion is to direct council to investigate the legal issues and processes to merge or enter into an agreement, the Portsmouth Public Schools' OPEB trust fund with the city, and report to the, to the school board at its May eleventh, twenty seventeen, board meeting. That is the motion before you tonight. A yes vote means that you will, you want Mr. Meekins to investigate and bring back to the board a report or recommendation. A no vote means that you do not want him to do anything. So I want the board to understand when you vote ye- yes or no, what you're, how you're voting. Do any of you have any questions of, and understand what you're, what, what you'll be voting about? Okay? Thank you. At this time, do I have a motion to, for this, for this motion? I've read the motion, do I have a second? I do not have a second. Well, I've read, I mean, the motion on the floor is what I've just read. In order to vote now, you, you've got, I need a second, I need someone to second it so that you can vote.
Second.
All right, a motion has been made, and second, any discussion? Mr. Meekins is here to, to answer any more questions. At this time, board members, I want you to vote by electronic vote.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
I just, right, I, I just had a comment.
Sure.
Well, and I think I know what the answer is with, with Mr. Meekins, a question just came to mind, as you've explained it and so forth, under code fifteen point two dash fifteen forty-four. Yeah, you're better at that than I am. If I'm understanding this correctly, with us having this trust in place, it's for the exclusive benefit of all employees that is retired and those that will be fully benefited. So irrelevant how this, these funds go, that always has to be kept in mind of how it goes. And it sounds like of this, if this, if we wanted to, you can always, the city and us could always come and have a conversation about joining a totally completely different fund, but as far as moving any assets from this particular trust, this OPEB, that unless you can prove or validate that it would be to the exclusive benefits of those Portsmouth Public School employees, it would be very difficult to do.
That is my considered opinion, sir. And I will tell you why I think that's structured that way, but that's just my opinion why I think it's structured that way. I can imagine the General Assembly not thinking it'd be a very good idea to allow any locality, municipality, school board to stash money in trust and then raid it when times got tight.
Chairman Parent, I, I just wanna say that based upon everything that I have heard over the last couple of weeks with this discussion, based on what's been presented this evening and before, based how I understand city code and so forth, that is how I will be voting accordingly this evening.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk? I thought I did. Oh, I did.
Eight no votes.
Means, Mr. Meekins, no more discussion. Okay? Thank you. All right, the next item is the monthly, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, we do have another item. Ms. Storch is going to brief the board on the.
Risk management, thank you. As she comes forward, I think what we want to do is to address the, the sheet that was passed out at the city council early work session, that was a sheet that was provided to myself and Ms. Storch earlier Tuesday afternoon by Dr. Patton and Ms. Washington, who I believe gave the presentation to the city council members. And what I would, we had some, some questions from some of the board members to, I guess, what does this mean, what, what are these numbers? So I've asked Ms. Storch to, to give you an idea of what these numbers are, and then after that, we will share with you some of our concerns, we'll summarize what, what, what we think this means, and then we will give you some additional factors as a board that you need to consider. So with that, Ms. Storch, will you go ahead and begin?
Good evening again. The form that's been provided to you, and that was presented to city council, I believe, on this Tuesday, about the projected fiscal year nineteen impact of fiscal year eighteen, two percent raise for, for all employees. In summary, this sheet is stating five main points. One, that the city is projecting that by combining the city and schools' risk management funds, and this is just our general liability and workers' comp programs, that PPS will save four hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. Secondly, the city is projecting the state will give a yearly equivalent of the state compensation supplement in fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty. Thirdly, the city is projecting that other state funding will stay the same in fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty. Next, the city is projecting that the amount that will be needed for raises in fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty will be four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And lastly, this four hundred and sixty thousand dollars will come from the money saved by combining the programs, as mentioned in point one. So based on review of this proposal, there are a couple of, four main additional factors that should be considered. One is that when the state gives a compensation supplement in the first year, they provide it within a lump sum, but in following years, that two percent raise will be incorporated into the average salaries that are used in the standards of quality funding formula, which we all know that standards of quality is a minimum funding level for education. Second, supplemental lottery funds, these cannot be guaranteed from one year to the next, thus it's best that, as a school division, and this is what we do, we annually analyze what those supplemental lottery funds are and how we should use them, because there is not a guarantee from year to year. For example, beginning in fiscal year sixteen, that is the first year, and I'm just look back as far as fiscal year fourteen, I see that we receive supplemental lottery funds. With a new governor potentially coming into place, I don't know if we'll see supplemental lottery funds going forward. Thirdly, our sales tax and basic aid and other components of state funding, they fluctuate from year to year. And lastly, when it comes to our general liability and workers' compensation program for fiscal year sixteen, we are only putting in the amount of money needed to cover the fiscal year seventeen expenses, and based on this, we are expecting to break even for fiscal year seventeen, and we plan to continue that into next, following years.
Ms. Heinz?
Can you explain what you mean by break even for fiscal year seventeen? Does that mean a zero balance with nothing extra in it?
That means we are not trying to grow the current fund balance.
Any, any other questions with the rest of the vote? Well, I have, I feel like Dr. Bracy and I have, and you, we've dealt with this all week. week. And it was on our Monday night meeting when they were discussing the risk management. If we, if the school board decides to merge, because that, that was the recommendation by the mayor and the city manager to Dr. Bracy and myself, that we merge our departments. Now, at one time many years ago, there were, there were, there were, there was one department, and the school system paid its share, and the city paid its share, and it was operated by the, by the city. My understanding is that, from the Monday night meeting, that we would have, we would go back to having one department, but that the school board would not have to pay any funds into the risk management. That's the general liability and workers' comp. Therefore, you know, you would have, you would have savings. We did send out an email to the city council this afternoon and, and the school board. I did get two responses, and we asked for a memorandum of an agreement that would, in other words, that would basically guarantee the school system would not have to pay any, any money. And we got no's. We've got two no's so far. So I just want, you know, the public to understand, it's, it's not that the, the school system is not open to these suggestions. The bottom line is that we, we can't just enter into a, an agreement if, if the city is not willing to enter into a memorandum of understanding and guarantee that for us, because we don't know, we, we don't know if we do take the money that we have in our risk management and reappropriate that to the city, that then they reappropriate that back to the school board, and we would, we would use that, those funds for the pay raises. Is that, is that the understanding that we have?
Well, I, I'll defer to Dr. Bracy.
Is that the understanding that we have at this point?
At this point.
At this point. Okay. But anyway, I think the board has received the, the two comments by two of the city council members. I just wanted to bring that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands where we are with that, so. Dr. Bracy, yes?
And let me add to that, Mr. Parent. And, and with our discussion, and Mrs. Dorch and I, and Mr. Durin, we, we've been looking at this, looking at the numbers, and as was stated, with the projections that the city are, that they're raising with the, with some of the projections from the state, we all know that the state funds are never a, a flat rate. They fluctuate up and down. Our concern is what happens when it's below?
Right.
I know it's one thing you said that we still have to pay something for, you know, our claims. We understand that, but that being the case, what's going to happen when we look at your numbers that you projected, that the state is going to fund us with the continuing the, the raises by looking at the lottery, lottery proceeds which you mentioned? Who knows what's going to happen in the new administration? You know, we may not have that flexibility. So if they can put these numbers together, now, are they going to be able to provide an MOA to hold these firm if they decrease? If the numbers decrease? You know, that's another conversation. You know, will they do that? Since it was no on the previous email. So in looking at that, and knowing that the chances of them approving that may be slim to none, looks like we need to, we, we need to look at our maintaining the risk management and finding a reasonable amount of fund balance that, that we need to have where it won't give the appearance that it's overfunded, where we can look at a recommended level that, that we could be at, and then use some of those surplus funds that we don't have to maintain in our balance for some one-time, one-time things that we need to get done. So what that means, we're still looking for a 2% raise. And if we don't get any assistance from the city, then what we will have to do after they vote to approve that they're not going to do anything, is to either say we can't do it, or we come back and we look at other ways that we can do it. Now, in our, in our proposed budget with the level funding, you know, we had already included instructional assistance, add an additional instructional assistance to kindergarten, classroom. So those are things, when we start talking about personnel, those are things that we can look at. I mean, we have to look at a number of things. We have to look at some programs. You know, we have to look at operations. You know, we have to look at curriculum instruction, so, and facilities. You know, it goes on and on. If, if we're going to get to this number, we got to look across the board to find a way to do it. Now, what that means is that we're sacrificing our students to maintain our teachers, which is a bad precedent. You know, I wouldn't want to be in a situation where I don't feel that I'm getting the support that I need to provide what's best for our students. You know, you just heard Ms. Cherry speak earlier, that, you know, hey, we're in a impoverished city. This is an urban city in every sense of the, of the meaning. And what are we going to do if we can't get the additional funds for, to help and move our students forward? You know, and as superintendent, you know, I think that's sad, because I'm, I'm being put in a situation that I can't do the things that I need to do to make the district move forward. And I hear too often from some, some officials that our schools are not doing well. Well, if you realize that, and some may have ran on that, what are you doing about it other than talking about it? You know, we, we're good when it comes to photo ops, but what, when it comes time to put the metal to the road or rubber to the road, where are you and what are you doing? And I'm just sharing that because I, I get frustrated, because at the end of the year, you're going to be looking at me, how many schools are accredited? How many additional schools do we have accredited? And I, in some sense, my hands are tied. So I just wanted to, to share that and just give you a breakdown of, of what, where we are with, with this and our sense of how we need to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Parent. I just wanted some clarification when you say that they were saying you didn't, we didn't have to put any more money, and that, I, I think that was totally confused.
It was very.
No, because they never meant that we would never have to put any money into the risk management fund if we merged.
Well, that's what we, that's what we understood.
I mean, I looked at the.
Right.
I, I mean, I watched the work session.
Yeah.
But I knew, I know that's impossible.
Right.
And when you read, when you, Ms. Simmons, Councilwoman Simmons responded to you.
Right, she did.
About your question about the MOU, if I can read it, she made it clear. She said, no, Chairman Parent and Dr. Bracy were both present earlier this week during the council public work session, when a majority agreed there would be no MOU to confirm a pay plan for teachers in the future anymore than we issue one for city employees. And of course, the school division will still pay for their own, own risk management expenses. They just shouldn't need to budget as much as previously done in recent years, an immediate $200,000 reduction, and as much as $460,000 going forward based on savings estimates. So they, they may have misspoke, but they're not asking us to merge risk management for us never to put any funds in there. I mean, that's just common, you know, knowledge, I would think. But because of all of the dissension and the discussion and the back and forth, and if we, we manage our own risk management fund now, and right now we save like, you say, $200,000 a year, I don't know where they got that figure from anyway, because, but $200,000 a year out of a $19 million risk management fund is nothing. I can spend $200,000 a year on myself very easily. Most of you all could. So I, I, I don't even see the benefit of, of this at this point. And, and I'm not sure this is up for a vote tonight.
We're not voting.
We're just discussing.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clear that up. At no time, if they said it, they, they did not mean we would not have to put any, any more money into the risk management fund.
Well, right. And Monday evening, we could not speak, but when the two council members asked the question, Ms. Kelly, the CFO, and Dr. Patton said, and I want to make sure that I've got this right, because the three of us went upstairs, they, they said to the council that, you know, we were talking about where are the savings, and they said the savings would be that the school board would not have to budget for risk management. And that confused the three of us. And that's why, you know, we sent that email out, because we wanted to be, we want to clarify, we wanted to clarify. But then now we're getting what, what the council members are saying what they meant. But I will tell you what they said and the way we interpreted it. That's all I can say. Ms. Allen?
I'm just going to be plain about what I feel like I need to say, but I want to be very clear.
Good.
Number one, we started off with a list where we looked at, we were going to need $9 million.
Right.
We had a discussion. It went down to $5.4 million.
Right.
At this point, we're just asking that raises be covered for our staff. Teaching is the profession that teaches all other professions, including the professions that are going to be receiving a 2.5% raise and a bonus. We can't say that this is a new Portsmouth and not include our teachers in that family. So I want to be very clear, our teachers, our staff, that includes our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, they deserve a raise, just like our city workers do. They work hard, just like our city workers do. Our city workers would not be the city workers without our educators. So I implore people, and I can't say this any more emphatically, that we need to ring the phones of our council people, we need to ask our mayor, why aren't you guys standing up for what you ran on? I just needed to say that.
Good. Very good. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman. I have three questions, and I'm just going to go down the list, because if I don't, it's, I'm going to lose it.
Okay.
Number one, and I'm going to ask this one first, is as you guys were talking about what was said Monday night with the risk management, I'm going to ask Brittany, Mrs. Dorch, do we put $1.2 million in our risk management fund every year?
I can only speak from the time I've been CFO.
Okay.
Which is September of this fiscal year.
Right.
And the budget for risk management fund for this portion, the general liability and workers' comp program.
Yeah.
Is $1.4 million.
Okay. Thank you. Question number two, Dr. Bracy, I'm going to ask you and your staff to go back and give that budget a second look. Bring us a, a budget readjustment, I hate to call it a budget cut, because that's not what I want to say, but a readjustment of budget to see if we can find it within our budget to provide our raises, as you stated earlier. And the same way that we talked about a list of things that we wanted to ask for, for extra, I would like to see a list of things that would be cut, so that we can look at them as a board and, and hear your thoughts and your philosophies about why they're on the, why they are there. Number three, is there, because it has become so contentious between the two sides at this moment in time, is there people, a third-party professional that does just risk management, to come in and look at ours, to give us an outside perspective on what it is that we do, and maybe where we can make our own savings? Because nothing against you, nothing against any city staff, I'm sure there are people that specialize in just risk management. And I would rather have a third-party professional that has no skin in this game whatsoever come in and tell me what and how I can use my money, because we are allocated to. And I would rather hire my own professional than take it on the advice of somebody else who is not a strict professional in risk management funds. Thank you.
Do we have any more, any more speakers regarding risk management? Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Now, Dr. Bracy, your superintendent's report.
Well, you, you have the report in front of you, so with the sake of time, I won't read that. The, the only thing that I was going to mention was the, the worlds with the robotics team, just to give you an update on that, and think that has already been done. But if you can just take a look at the other items on the report at your leisure, that will be fine.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, do you have any comments or concerns? Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that I wanted to make sure that I made public was that there is still time to nominate someone for the SAIL awards that are going to be presented by the Left Co. Alumni Association. It's an opportunity for two members of the staff of Portsmouth Public Schools, except for our principals, to receive a $1,000 award. You have until month, until May 1st to make a nomination. It can be a cafeteria worker, an instructional assistant, a bus driver, teachers, assistants, principals, custodians, crossing guards, anyone who goes above and beyond to make our students' day a little bit better. During this time, we want to definitely make sure that we encourage people to nominate someone. Two members of Portsmouth Public Schools will receive a $1,000 award. There is a banquet that's going to be held June 1st at the Children's Museum that will highlight and celebrate the individuals that were also nominated and who will win. So if you're interested in nominating for the SAIL award, which stands for Support, Assistance, Instruction, and Leadership, it's our Heroes in the Hallway banquet that will be on June 1st, 6:00 PM, at the Children's Museum of Virginia, and it is sponsored by the Left Co. Alumni Association. I also wanted to take the time to offer support to board member Cardell Patillo, who will be running for a regional position with the Virginia School Board Association. We wish him well in that run, and he will represent Portsmouth proudly. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Atkinson?
I just want to say, better late than never. So happy Administrative Professionals Day to all. Also want to bring attention to something that was on Dr. Bracy's superintendent's report. I did have the pleasure to attend Access College Commitment Day, April 25th at the TED. There were more than 2,600 students, about 60 from Portsmouth Public Schools, and all of those students had their signs and their college commitments. So that was a great event to attend. Shaggy from Z104 hosted, so just want to shout out President Bonnie Sutton and the Access College Board. If you would like to know what's going on, you can always go under the hashtag CatchMeInCollege2017. Also, tomorrow is a History Bowl and a Math Bowl. They are both at the same time at 10:00 AM. So if any school board members are free, they would like our support at one of those, one of the two events. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I just want to remind everyone, we're supposed to go to, it's a Tidewater Regional.
Yep.
That's Monday.
Monday.
Right.
We're meeting at 3:00.
At 3:00 at IRC. And also, I think it would be a good idea to share this with the media, the points that were shared by Brittany, our CFO. The city manager provided Dr. Bracy with these figures, and then, of course, the concerns that you have about the lottery fund not being the same each. The, the information they use to come to write at their figures is, is not always the same from year to year.
For a.
So I think that would be something good to share with them about the budget. They did an article in the paper, I think it was this morning.
Yeah.
On the, on the budget, which I thought was very. On the, on the budget, which I thought was very good. Thank you, Sharice, for putting that out there, because you get a different perspective. Thanks a lot.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you Chairman. I just wanted to remind parents that our text messaging system is going live, and I know that I've been asking for that for a year now, because it's very easy for me to get, you know, Jay Wiggins, school's closed today because of, you know, it's a national holiday or something. But that communication with our parents, it puts that in their hands, and it is more timely and more, I hate to use the word 21st century, because we're like a decade and a half into the 21st century, but it puts us up there to have easier communications with the parents. So I, it's on Portsmouth Public Schools Facebook page, I saw it last night. I put the number in, and I texted to make sure I was listed for my student, and I am. So I just wanted to remind everybody to go in and get that number in the text message so that, you know, you know what's going on up to date, the same way you do with ESPN Sports Numbers and CNN News. So you can be up to date with Portsmouth Public Schools as well. So thank you, Dr. Bracy. Thank you, technology. Thank you, Sharice. Probably thank you to Mr. Ziegler as well for making that happen. I'm sure all y'all had a part in it. So Brittany, I wanted to say thank you, and Dr. Bracy, thank you for keeping the board up to date as to what's going on minute by minute, because, you know, it's fourth quarter, and we're looking at it. So I just want to say thank you. You guys are readily available, and so it makes communication and understanding very quickly in this, in this time, because that's where we are. So thank you guys for doing what you, what it is that you do, and good night.
We're not finished yet. Ms. Williams?
Yeah, one thing, thank you, when you start talking about technology. I was talking with some teachers today, and they were talking about the Chromebooks. And is there a way that those Chromebooks are filtered so they can't go to sites that they should not be?
They're supposed to.
Well, what they're saying is happening is they're jailbreaking the, whatever they call it, however that works.
Where's Dean? He can.
They're jailbreaking the Chromebooks, and there are things on there that should not, they, oops, should not be.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, we, we really need to look at what we need to do about that, because they say it is a concern. They're doing a lot of things on there that should not be, be done.
Well, that would be in Mr.
Mister's.
Slapper.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yeah. Is, is there, I guess, with, with all the new technology and things they have, I guess they can just about do anything to.
Right.
To bypass, but is there a safety mechanism that, because I, I certainly wouldn't want, you know, Portsmouth Public Schools to have that on our, on our site.
Let's look, Mr. Slapper.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Almost said good morning.
[laughing].
Yep.
Obviously, obviously, technology's constantly evolving, and, you know, what we do to, it's ironic that you, you bring that up. Michaela was talking to me about some feedback she received from students, because we're too stringent on our web filtering. And what we try to do is we, we strive to hit that happy median. We're, we're blocking what we need to block, and we're allowing what we need to get through so that we can bring media-rich instruction to our students. And that's really our goal. So the, the, the challenge is constant, the risk is always there, and we, we mitigate, and we do whatever we can whenever we find out that, that folks are getting around our filtering. To say that it's impossible to block absolutely everything is an exact, is a correct statement. It is literally impossible. So it takes a lot of things to make sure that we're protecting. And, and that's the goal with SIPA, the guidelines for filtering, is, is that we want to protect kids. It doesn't say prevent, it says protect. And that's what we try to do. We're looking at tools that will allow us to allow parents have access to see where their kids are going. New filtering systems are available now that will give parents a window into what's going on, on the devices that the kids are using, so they can assist us, because that's what we need. It really takes the technology, it takes the school and the personnel, teachers, administration, and then it takes the parents. I mean, that's, doesn't that sound like something that's very, very familiar?
Right.
But that's really what it does take, and that's really the, what we're trying to accomplish. So we're looking at some other technology moving into next year, but we'll certainly take a look and see what's going on with the devices on the Chromebook. All right? Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you.
Did you want to address?
The host with the most, you know. I didn't mean, I don't want this to turn into a technology presentation, because we'll have those later. But have we done workshops for parents to show them how to put filters on Chromebooks? Have we had those discussions with parents? So that if they want something more stringent than what we do when it goes home and it may hit their wireless in their house, have we shown parents how to check for browsing history? Have we shown parents how to be advocates on their child's device to protect their children when they're not with us?
To my knowledge, we haven't, we haven't really directly addressed that with parents, but that's a great idea. I mean, I think, you know, our program is certainly evolving.
Right.
And we're evolving. So I think that's, that's a great idea. And I think the product that we're looking at really lends to exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
It even allows parents to fluctuate what they're filtering, or even make it more stringent when they come home.
Right.
Set it so they can't get on it, you know, so that, because it's time to go to bed.
Right.
You know, things of that nature.
Okay.
So, yeah, that leads right to where we're thinking, and that's really getting more involvement from our parents. Again, a very common theme.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. All right, subcommittee reports. I think we have discussed the budget and finance. We have shared with you, continued to share with you, the city council liaison, Mrs. Williams and I have shared with you, and we have met with them. Do we have any update on corporate sponsorships? Dr. Whitaker, Ms., either one of you?
Not at this time.
Okay. Ms. Williams, do you, y'all have any curriculum and instruction update? We've heard a lot. Do you have anything extra to, to share?
No.
Okay. Human resources, anything with human resources? Legislative policy?
No report as of right now, but we are reviewing some policies to make sure their effectiveness.
Thank you. And minority contractors' policy? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, we met this past Monday. We have four names to get approval for at our next meeting for the advisory committee.
Very good. Thank you. And we've heard, we've just heard from technology and operation. And one thing, Dr. Bracy, when we go on the first, we need to make sure we, we're taking the art that we have to enter in the regional contest. So, uh-oh, Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you Chairman. The community members, I know it's a subcommittee of the disciplinary committee, would like to know, when are we going to meet?
The disciplinary committee, when are they going to meet?
We will, we will get together on that. I think as we start looking at the code of student conduct, we'll come together. I met with Dr. Sandelin earlier this week, and that was one of the things that, that we discussed. So we'll, that will be just one of the agenda items, but yeah, we'll, we'll share that with you soon.
Okay. Last item on the agenda, do I have a motion for adjournment?
For adjournment.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your patience and.